Anacis is rolling.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Mayor likes.
Great, thank you, Mark. So today is December twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. The time is seven sixteen P M. And I am calling to order the Bonaparte City Council Regular Meeting. We have someone who can lead us in an invocation. Sure, we have our Commissioner. Our Housing Commissioner will lead us in invocations. So if you're able to please stand at this time.
Good evening. It's power heads. God, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us through a successful year. Though it may not have ended how some may have wanted to, Lord, the city of Baldwin Park, the hub of the San Gabriel Valley, has made such progress. Thank you for the leaders that we have in place. Thank you for the citizens abroad and those that are here today. We pray that you just continue to guide us as leaders in the city on what you would have us to do for the betterment of all that are here. Just continue to keep us, bless us this holiday season, and for those who may be outside with no place to sleep, I pray that you provide something for them and keep them warm and fed and dry. In your name we pray. Amen.
Uh, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
Here.
Councilmember Jean M. Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
And City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. As you indicated earlier tonight, the City Council on the Special Meeting met in closed session. The items are listed on the Special Meeting Agenda. Uh, there were a few items related to existing litigation in the matters of Kuberi Hemenway Finley et al versus Baldwin Park. Uh, Setina Huerta Jimenez para Real Valdivia versus the City of Baldwin Park. Uh, in those matters, uh, City Council heard a presentation, uh, from its legal counsel. Uh, there is no reportable action on those items. I should also mention that Mayor Pro Tem Damian did not participate, uh, in those items out of an abundance of caution due to a conflict of interest. As one of the plaintiffs in that case, I believe, is a source of income to one of his businesses. Uh, we also had a presentation regarding the case of Roalus versus City of Baldwin Park. City Council heard a presentation regarding that matter, provided direction, uh, and we have no reportable action. There was also a discussion, uh, on conference with real property negotiators concerning the, uh, address listed as forty-one sixty-one Baldwin Park Avenue. Uh, City Council heard a presentation from its city negotiating team, including, uh, Chief Executive Officer, uh, Saldivar, uh, provided direction, and we have no reportable action. That concludes the report.
Thank you for that, City Attorney. So at this moment, we don't have any more. We don't have any more business to conduct in closed session, so I will go ahead and, uh, make a motion to adjourn the second, I mean, the special meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, our special meeting is now adjourned, and we do move on to our announcements. Uh, the City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening in this, with the City Council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. You do not have anything on proclamations, commendations, and presentations, so at this moment.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, thank you. I would like to close on behalf of a longtime Baldwin Park resident, Blanca Cabrera. And, uh, she was born May tenth nineteen fifty-five and passed December second, two thousand twenty-two. She is survived by her siblings, longtime mayor Manuel Lozano, Junior Lozano, Juan Lozano, uh, Mary Imelda, Rick, and her daughter Yessenya, as well as, uh, many grandchildren, great-grandchildren. And so we just want to extend our condolences to this longtime family in the city, uh, very loved and revered. And, um, uh, you just wanted to extend our condolences. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. Of course, we do want to extend our condolences to the family. At this moment, I will move to open up, uh, public communication. City Clerk, is anybody looking to speak?
Yes, we have one individual looking to speak via phone, and I have one speaker card.
All you guys know that first week of November on the T K that Jose's pet up punched me. Um, and, you know, I was really disappointed in the way that Mike Salas handled the situation. When I fell to the floor, he came out of nowhere, which kind of makes me suspect that he may have been working with the Peta. And, um, he's been in trouble before by H R. And when I told him that I was punched, he said Jose did not punch you. I said, yes, he did. And I asked him to call nine-one-one, and he said that he wasn't going to call nine-one-one. And I think that Mike Salas is a huge liability for the city. He's already been transferred from a difficult department. He has a lot of issues. He seems to be, um, in subordination to a lot of the policies that the city has. And I think that he needs to be disciplined for what he's been doing and how he's been behaving. And yeah, like I said, once again, there's children in this facility, there's juveniles in this facility, people can get hurt, and if you can't make a simple decision, whether he believes me or not to call nine-one-one, I think that's a serious mistake on his part. So, um, that's what I want to say about him. And, uh, I just wanted to say, you know, Manny Corillo has been doing a decent job of, uh, remedying some of the issues that have come up. So, but I think with Salas there, it's always going to be problematic, and I think that a lot of the issues that have come up are because of Salas and also the head boxing coach, who has been doing a good job, uh, managing the problems and the discipline issues that have been arising. So I'm hoping that the City Council fixes these issues or makes it a priority to fix these issues. And I also think that, yeah, um, I mean, charges are still pending against the Peta, and from what I understand, um, yesterday or today, that criminal papers have been served on it that are not even part of the incident when he punched. So I do think he's a liability to the city too, and the city needs to do as due diligence and research and investigate that. So I thank you for your time and thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next. Next, I'd like to call Catherine Lozier.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Council and community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. With the holidays coming up, I just wanted to let everybody know that the library will be open for full service on Saturday, December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first. We'll only be open until five P M instead of six P M, but please do stop in and see us if you need service. The libraries that have Sunday and Monday services will be closed on December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and then again on January first and, and second. Our digital library is always open. Uh, I also wanted to announce that our winter reading club has begun. This is for readers of all ages. Now through January fifteenth, participants may read up to four hundred hours to get entered into a drawing for prizes. And for children and teen to come into the library and claim a bag of goodies, including a, a book and other prizes. And then we also are aiming as a system of reading up to one million minutes, so please do join in and help us reach that goal. And then I wanted to get a head start on a really fantastic January program at the library. We're going to be having magician Artie Loon come for a, a magic show for children ages four to eleven. He is phenomenal, uh, so please do share that with anybody who might be interested. As attendance and space is limited, so we do ask those who would like to attend to please register in advance, and the registration will open on January seventh. Thank you so much. Hope to see you at the library. Thank you.
Mayor, that, those are all of the cards we've received.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, if anybody would like to speak that didn't fill out a speaker card, now is your time.
John Reos, resident. Uh, one of the things, I already talked to, uh, Sam before the meeting, and I told him that, uh, his public work employees are doing a beautiful job. They're picking up all the trash that's been around the city lately. Um. They, I have a very close communication with, not only with Sam, but with Anthony and the new supervisor. And that's all the, the citizens want, you know, a communication, somebody we can talk to. One of the things that I mentioned to you, uh, the C E O, about the weekend vendors, you know, we've been getting a lot of, uh, flower. The other part that, the food vendors, they're still coming around the schools. And that's something that we have to look out for. The kids in the school, they'll go out and buy stuff. We don't know how healthy it is. We have to get rid of all. And, uh, but other than that, everything looks pretty good at the city. Mayor, you did a beautiful job kicking the Diablo's butt. You know, if you notice that in my area, you never saw a sign from him. The only sign you saw was El Diablo in front of my house, you know. But it's, uh, you guys have a happy holidays. Enrique, I know you're going to Honora. Be careful out there, okay? Have a good holiday.
Good night. My name is Abel. Those may, yeah, me conoce. I want to talk about the city that we're working very well. The police are making many, many calls. And every call that I get, they resolve. David Leon. He knows that I'm calling to try to clean the city better and not have robbers, because there have been many robberies recently, and we want to not have more robbers. And remove the homeless a little bit, and we're doing it more continually. I've reported many things that have been done, and they've done all the things, where there's water flowing, all that. The garbage, too, has risen. The garbage is very clean. We're continuing to work together, and we hope to continue to work together, okay, to keep the city clean. Are you in agreement?
Good evening to all. Uh, my name is Abel. You know me already, and I'm here to tell the City Council about the good work that they're, they've been doing. Um, I've been in contact with the police, and they've replied to my calls, and they're doing a good job, uh, with David Leon. Uh, we're cleaning the city, and, uh, it looks good. Uh, we have to try to control the robberies because there's been quite a few, and, uh, but it's, on, it's working out. Um, we have to try to remove the homeless a little bit more, and, uh, you know, we have reported many things, and, uh, but things are getting done. So we have to keep on working on the trash, and, um, mainly that's, that's, uh, what we've been doing.
Uh, Fernando de Sirillar, Fernando de Sirillar, I'm answering a lot of my calls. 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 Uh, mattresses, whatever, big garbage, and I'm lifting it. And Yanes, I also want to work together to clean the city, okay? If you don't work, we can't do much.
Fernando. Okay, Fernando, it's been doing a great job also with the city cleaning. Uh, if I call him and I tell him something about the trash, he comes and picks it up. There've been some problems with mattresses, and they have come and picked them up. And, uh, Yanes also, I want to let you know that we need to work together. We need to work together to get this done.
It's all for you to be happy. It's the day of celebration. We just created, okay?
That's all. I want to wish you, uh, happy holidays and have a wonderful holiday season, okay?
Greg Tuttle, Ben Nasona. Um, first of all, I want to address, um, Manny Corillo with, uh, Paul Cook called in on your Mike Salas. I think it's a very serious thing about Mike Salas not calling for emergency help when somebody requested it. That needs to be addressed. If somebody, I don't care who it is, if they ask for help, you call nine-one-one or you call the police. You, you get an ambulance there. It doesn't matter. They're not a doctor. Mike Salas is not a doctor. He should have addressed that. Okay, so that should be addressed with you, with Mike Salas, okay? Now then, um, I want to go into our new Councilwoman, Jeannie. I just want to make sure that you understand, we're going to be watching you, and you're not using police time and cars to drive you around because you don't have a driver's license, don't drive. We want to make sure that you're not using city cars and city employees to drive you around because you don't drive. You can have Lozano or whoever else you want drive you around. You get five hundred dollars in car allowance out of the city here, which you shouldn't get legally, but you do, and you use that for Uber. But don't be using the city finances and the city police department to drive you around anymore, because that's not going to happen. Now then, I want to go into Ron Corup Garcia. He still doesn't want to meet with me. I don't know what he's afraid of, because he doesn't want to tell the truth. But this, uh, building over here that they, Royal Coaches built years ago with, uh, Autobody, I've tried everything I can to get this thing closed down because it doesn't have parking. There are parking cars illegally on sidewalks, and then we have, I've called the chief numerous times to have, uh, parking enforcement to come over. You know what they do now, chief? They turn the lights on and warn that they're going to cite, so they can move the cars before they cite them. Great job. That's ridiculous. The cars are up on sidewalks next to cars. This Autobody has no place to park a car. So they put them on the side of the building and in a street that's no parking on either side. But do you think our parking enforcement does anything? No. But they do forewarn them, especially on Mondays when it comes for streets we predict. So this thing needs to be addressed with this illegal building with Royal Coaches with the Autobody. That should have never happened. And they got a big tent down there at the back that I've told the, uh, code enforcement people, but because Ron's buddies with Willie Salazar, it doesn't get done. And I've got numerous papers here with Ron Garcia's name on it all over, giving them special privileges, uh, coming in, getting a permit after the building's already built, after the structure's already built, to get a permit, which they don't even get. And then they get a business license that's been, uh, passed due since oh twelve. And this is our towing company. We need to stop this. Thank you.
Seeing that there is nobody else looking to speak, I will now move to closed public communication. And we are, uh, moving to our content calendar. Are there any items, uh, Council would like to pull from items one through sixteen?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item eleven.
I'd like to pull item number seven, please.
All right, so I will make a motion to pass items one through sixteen, excluding eleven, five, and seven. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila. Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Gina Ayala.
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you for that. So I believe, uh, we'll go in, uh, numerical, new, we'll go from least to greatest. I believe, uh, Councilwoman, I would like you to have the floor.
So I will address this to, uh, Sam, so we can get some clarification. I know this is to complete the improvements, uh, for for surrounding homes, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So I, I do have a few questions because, um, it was my understanding that when this was being done, but now I know it's, it was incorrect, that that, in, the project included completing the eating area for our residents, which part of it has been fixed, correct? Uh, but there is, uh, a section of it, which is the flooring, that needs to be completed, and it wasn't part of this expenditures. Um, so before, um, we authorize this, what is it? What will it take for us to complete this project? How much do we need approximately? I know you probably don't have estimates yet in order for us to complete that part of the project.
You know, ab- absolutely. Thank you. Um, so, uh, a good estimate, and an estimate that we were going off of during the project, um, is around twenty thousand dollars for the flooring.
Mm-huh.
Uh, we did not, uh, seek estimates for that work. We decided that that would be moved over to phase two. Uh, the only reason for that was because, um, we had a target of, uh, savings that we needed to meet uh, for operations of the, um, site. So the, um, retrofitting or legalizing of that storage building took a lot of money. So we replaced the garage door, we changed the header, uh, we bolted down the, um, building, and, uh, we did some other improvements. And so, uh, at the end of the project, we couldn't afford it and wanted to have some savings. So we just moved the flooring portion to the next phase.
And what does phase two include?
So phase two is largely going to include a, uh, kitchen, so that second home, if you will, will be converted to a, uh, a kitchen.
Okay, so what is it exactly that we can do to make it part of this phase? Because, as you know, and all of us, all of you that were out there, it's very cold out there. And our families don't have a dining area. I'm sure it gets tiring to sit with your food on your lap. So what can we do or how can we go about it so that we can include this part of the face, this part of the project in this phase, so we can complete that and then continue with phase two later on? In addition to that, um, I had already talked to, to Manny, and I had brought it up to Enrique as well, I think, about the ramps to the restrooms, how they're ve- I know we have an A D A ramp, which is beautiful because it's easy access. But the rest of the ramps, the one going up into the laundry and to the rest of the restrooms, they're very narrow, and the steps are very high. And being there yesterday, you know, they have cute little newborns, but think of a mommy or daddy going into the laundry room, carrying that baby, carrying a basket. It's an accident ready to happen. So we need to improve those ramps so that they're safe and accessible to our families and it doesn't pose a danger. What else can we do to include that in here, in this particular phase?
No, thank you. So, um, yes, uh, tho- those ramps are designed for, uh, portable trailers that drive around, uh, to, uh, address that particular issue, which I, I agree on. Even I have trouble climbing on those stairs. Um, they would need to be retrofitted, um, with a, um, uh, sort of like an attachment type, uh, steps and ramps. And so to do that, uh, again, um, just estimating, uh, that would take additional, I would say, ten thousand dollars.
Mm-huh.
So to do both the, uh, flooring and address those ramps, I would say, um, somewhere around thirty thousand dollars will cover it.
So is there somewhere where we can get those thirty thousand dollars to complete that part of the project?
So.
That's such a question.
Yeah, we, we weren't, uh, so I didn't, uh, consider that, but right off the top of my head, I can think of a few, um, you know, a, a few things that we can do. Uh, we can allocate some ARPA money, uh, thirty thousand. Um, or, uh, there are savings in this, uh, project. We have about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in savings.
Mm-huh.
Um, this is still part of the, um, the, uh, the, the housing grant, uh, that we got to, the capital that we got to do the project. So there's savings there, and that was, that was an intentional target that we were trying to meet, but we can, we can take it off of that. That's another option. Uh, you can provide direction to do that now as a not-to-exceed, and we can use that funds which are already available.
Okay.
And then if it becomes a problem where now the shortfall or the operations comes in, then you can allocate ARPA to operations, which is.
So we can take it from either end and then allocate from either end as well, depending where we're taking it from.
Correct. And so those are just two ideas that I came up, uh, with right now, so there, there could be other options.
Okay, so, uh, uh, colleagues, it's a concern to me that, um, that we don't have the dining area for our residents, and as I mentioned, it's very cold out there. And there's nowhere for them to sit down and eat comfortably with their families. And also, if, I'm sure all of you have seen the ramps going up into the bathroom and into the, to the laundry area. They're very dangerous. I, it's difficult for me to climb up also. I, I'm going up. It, it's not, it's not a steady ramp. So I would like to go into that savings that we have, the hundred and forty, that, that we have extra from that project and use those thirty thousand dollars possibly, so we can make those improvements and finish that project. And because I think the second phase is going to take a lot longer, and I don't think we have the time. Again, anything can happen. Somebody can fall from that ramp and get injured. And the cold, the cold itself, I don't want our families sitting outside or sitting in their small space, trying to have dinner with their families if we have that extra money there right now.
Right.
So I would like to, um, allocate those thirty thousand dollars, if it's okay with you, um, to, to continue to finish that. If staff, if you can bring it back.
Yeah, I, I would like to, um, you know, talk about it with, with staff.
Yes.
And, um, you know, figure out if it's available.
If I could inter, interject, Sam and, uh, Councilmember Avila, if possibly you could provide direction to, uh, staff to work with our finance director to identify the funding, because some of the monies that we have identified for the savings is going to be, uh, provided as funding for our service provider.
Mm-huh.
So if you give staff an opportunity to work with finance, and we will identify the funding. How does that sound, Sam?
So then we can bring it back, uh, direct you, our finance, to look at the funding, to see how that money is going to be moved around, how we can work with it, and then bring it back for the next meeting. Would that be fine?
And, um, just to add another, um, option, it would be to, uh, work with the C O G and ask them for, uh, funding, see if they have any funds that they could bring. Um, I know they're very interested in, um, completing that, uh, storage as well.
Right.
So, uh, I think as a third option, we can, um, sit down with them, discuss it, see if there's any opportunities for funding through them.
Yes.
And then we can bring back the item, uh, with, uh, staff's recommendation.
That would be perfect. So that is my recommendation, to bring it back with the funding recommendation, see what the C O G can do. That would be perfect. So that is my recommendation to bring it back with the funding recommendation, see what the Cog can do, and so see how we can work together to actually complete that phase of it. And then just continue phase two with more time, please.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so that sounds like that will be a separate item. So we'll pass the motion, and then you've given direction.
Yes.
Seems like everybody's on board. And then I heard you say that there's a newborn at Serenity Homes.
Yes, she's beautiful.
You name her after me?
I'm sorry?
You name her after me?
Victoria, no.
Close, but you know, very nice, right, to hear that Serenity Homes is doing something good for, for families, including newborns, that otherwise would be struggling at, you know, it's, it's very it's not, it's tricky, right? I mean, being a, you know, having a baby and having to navigate life on your own and struggle. So it's, it's, it's good that you bring that up.
So this baby was born there, mom was already living there, the baby was born at Seren- not at Serenity Homes, but that's her first home. And we do have another expecting mommy, so it's dangerous. Those ramps are very dangerous. So it is a priority that we make sure that they're safe, please. So yes, please bring back that report so we can work this out and make sure that is complete. That's my motion.
Will do. Thank you.
Right, so I would go ahead and like to move to approve item five and then to bring it back with the reports, please.
Great. I'll second your motion. City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alejandro Avila? Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Jean M. Ayala?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Great, so your motion passes and item five passes as well. We do have item number seven. I'm not entirely sure who called for item number seven. Well, Councilmember Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you. You know, before we proceed with this item, have we checked with the Valley County Water District on their program? Because I know they've done this in the past. And I would hate for us to duplicate efforts if they're already going to be offering this program or if it's an ongoing program. And especially given the eight hundred thousand dollar allocation, because I, I do see the
Sorry. That's item number sixteen, I believe, seven?
Eighteen.
That's item number eighteen.
That is on Reports of Officers, item eighteen.
You are absolutely right. I am so sorry about that. I got ahead of myself, but you know it's coming, so.
I'll, I'll take over item seven if you'd like, Councilmember. I've got a couple of questions.
Well, I, yeah, on number seven, I did want to understand this hundred fifty thousand dollar allocation and just get a little bit more information on, on this. But yes, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem, if you have more questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Sam, yeah, Sam, so I do have a couple of questions. You're requesting the up to one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, do we normally perform these services in-house? Or do we usually contract them out?
It's a mixture of both. Some of them we do in-house and some of them we do contract out. So it's, it's a little bit of both.
Okay. And now on the staff report, you did state that the city's fiscal year 2022, 2023 operations budget are quickly being exhausted and are expected to be insufficient to perform the essential services and properly maintain the city infrastructure through the end of the current fiscal year. Can you just elaborate? What exactly do you mean when you say quickly being exhausted?
Sure. So as, as we approach the mid-year and we look ahead towards the end of the year, we are seeing that a lot of these accounts that we budgeted originally a year ago are being used up rather quickly, or I should say faster than we want them to be. So this is coverage that we're asking for. This is to provide enough of a cushion for us to get to the end of the year. What we're asking for is additional appropriations up to a hundred fifty thousand for existing cost centers already approved in the budget. So these are items that, you know, the account numbers are already budgeted for. We just feel like we're going to need a little bit more of a cushion or backup i- in those funds. And whatever we don't expend, we'll just go and be rolled over to the next year. So this is a, a, a projection, so to speak, but it's a rather accurate, you know, projection. And so we think that with, with this appropriation, we would be able to accomplish these items by the end of the year. And as the new year comes with budgeting, we will budget accordingly.
Okay, so did we not budget? Did we not budget enough for these services or did we forget to budget?
That, that is correct. So the 2022 was overall an interesting year in terms of construction costs. We're seeing construction costs nearly double in some cases. So this is just a reflection of not budgeting enough in anticipation of inflation or increase in cost. Fuel was a, a, a big part of that during those summer years. And so, yes, so we didn't budget enough to cover these specific services. So what we're saying here is we, we would like to have the appropriation, but if not, we'll just hold off to these five items or six items and then budget them next year if the council chooses to do it that way.
But if we do it that way, then we're going to jeopardize not being able to complete these services for these five projects.
That is correct.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not worth it because we've got sidewalk sanitizing, sanitizing. Yeah, that's quite a few.
Yeah, so the sidewalk sanitizing, that's done in-house. Parking lot sweeping, that's done in-house. Hazmat cleanup, that is a contractor. Sidewalk grinding services are both contractor and in-house. Photovoltaic panel maintenance, these are, this is for maintenance of the solar panels we have in our parks. That is a contractor. And street maintenance on drainage, that is in-house.
Got it, okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Garcia, you want to go ahead and ask any questions on your item?
Uh, no, I think that answers my questions. Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
You want to make a motion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I have a quick question. For parking lots, which parking lots? Are you talking city parking lots?
Absolutely. We're talking about city-owned parking lots.
So Sam, the gist of this is you need this allocation to wrap up the projects and not delay them and not jeopardize them either, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so let me just go ahead and make the motion to approve.
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Jean M. Ayala?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, City Clerk. So Councilwoman Ayala, you do have the floor with item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, first of all, I don't have any questions. I just want to acknowledge the work that's gone into this item. It's been a long time in coming. I appreciate the staff report, going back to 2004, when I do recall going to these homes and seeing the ugliness of their street and just the flooding that was occurring on the daily when the raining was happening. So just for information, it says here in the staff report, it's a pub, it's a private street. So pretty much a hundred percent of the residents have to approve, you know, kind of giving up their rights to allowing us to do the project or to fix their street. And, and I appreciate, like I said, the detail in this, in this report, because it, it came down to pretty much eighty-four percent, like you said. So I, I acknowledge that, and I know there's a apartment complex there and, and just, just seeing that eighteen years of work, you know, has come to this. So I appreciate the funding available, and I appreciate that it's been allocated to fix this project, this, this community finally. And I don't know if anybody else wants to comment, but I'd like to make a motion to approve item eleven, and thank you for allocating those funds. And just to let you know, there are a few more private streets that I'm sure, you know, need that work too. So thank you. I make the motion to accept item eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jean M. Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that, City Clerk. So at this moment, we are at the Reports of Officers, reorganization of the City Council, selection of Mayor Pro Tem four. It is recommended the City Council complete the reorganization of the City Council and follow procedures as suggested for the selection of Mayor Pro Tem four. The City Clerk opens up the nominations for the office of Mayor Pro Tem, and we will, Councilmembers will nominate the members. So City Clerk, go ahead.
At this at this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, yes, thank you. Mayor, I would like to nominate Councilmember Monica Garcia as Mayor Pro Tem.
I will second that. Councilmember Avila?
City Clerk, there is a nomination with a motion and second, so go ahead and do a roll call.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Jean M. Ayala?
Yes.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just say thank you to my colleagues for the nomination and the approval. I also want to acknowledge Mayor Pro Tem Damian as he served in that role for the last year and express my appreciation to his contribution and leadership in the last year. So with that, I just want to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And we do have a plaque for outgoing Mayor Pro Tem Damian, but he's not here. So I'm going to go ahead and take a picture with it, and we'll Photoshop a minute. But, you know, we're very thankful to our council member, Daniel Damian, who's been very committed to the position. And as Mayor Pro Tem, you know, he's, he's done a phenomenal job in being outspoken on what he wants to get done and, and pushing forward. So we want to acknowledge that and want to thank Councilmember Daniel Damian for being a great part of this council.
I want to go ahead and echo the same sentiments. Thank you. Now you're Mayor, former Mayor Pro Tem for the work you have done and the service that you have done as a Mayor Pro Tem. And I know you will continue fighting and speaking out as a council member. And congratulations, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia for becoming our new Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you for the nomination, Councilmember.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for collaborating with us this last year. It was an honor and a pleasure to serve as your Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Garcia, well deserved. Congratulations on being our new Mayor Pro Tem and look forward to continuing the great work that we've done over the last two years.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Damian. So moving on to Reports of Officers, item number eighteen, the conservative approval of professional service agreement with EcoTech Services, Inc. and the Home Depot, Inc. for the High Efficiency Toilet and Showerhead Replacement Program. So just real quick, I know that we, I think that's been a whole year in the works, and I know that there's been a whole process to this. So one of the reasons that we wanted to do this was, as we know, not just the region, but the, the state is in a drought. And so we want to make sure that we not only encourage residents to save water, but also help them do so rather than just implementing restrictions on them. But also with the ever increasing cost of living here, and not just Ball and Park, but the, the state, we want to make sure that we help our residents alleviate some of those cost of living burdens. You know, we just heard from Southern California Edison on their, on their tiers of use. And I know Councilmember Damian mentioned some people have seen higher bills. I've also heard about that. You know, water, water bills are also, I mean, bills in general are going up, right? So with ARPA money, it's one of those few times we can actually do something to invest in, in the community directly rather than just on public property. So that's one of the reasons we came up with this. Helping residents save water and save on their bills while also having some nice infrastructure in their home.
I, I'd like to sort of provide a little bit of background, if, if I may. We do have a presentation for the City Council, ready to go if, if, if the council so wishes to entertain that, explaining how the program works and what's it all about. But as, as the mayor pointed out, this project has been in the works for a year. What we're doing tonight is not executing any contracts with any of the proposed contractors. This is to present to the council what the project is about, but it does set a cap limit of eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's what, what happened today, and we'll authorize, if the council approves, we'll authorize the CEO and staff and the city attorney to finalize the, the contracts and start up the project in January. So as I mentioned, we do have a presentation. I'd like to call on Romani, the city's engineering manager, who's been working on the project. He's prepared a couple of slides. And we'll talk about what the program is, and then we can have a larger discussion after. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, city staff.
Hey, Romani, could you mute the sound on the device until you need to hear it and just use the podium mic?
I'll, I'll be right back.
So councilmembers, hi, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and members of the audience. Tonight, I would like to present to you the High Efficiency Toilet and Showerhead Installation Program. So I broke down the presentation into three different parts. The first part is what exactly is this program about? Second is why we want to proceed with this program? And finally, how we're going to do this program? So let's start with what? We are proposing to replace old toilets and showerheads with new high efficiency ones. So residents who own and have old toilets are going to consume a lot of water can now replace their old toilets and showerheads with new high efficiency ones. Two, we propose to provide, deliver, and install with no cost. Third, we're planning to replace about fifteen to two thousand toilets and showerheads. This program in the beginning is going to be for homeowners, but according to the demand, we might open it for residents. And finally, if you approve this tonight, we would like to proceed in January of next year to December of 2024. So this is exactly what we want to do with this program. But why? First, saving water. So old toilets use about five to seven gallons per flush, which means an average of about six gallons for every flush. Our new toilets uses one point three gallons per flush, which means saving about four point seven gallons every flush. By doing a simple calculation, if we have four point seven gallons, and in the household we have three people, they use about three flushes per person per we have three people, they use about three flushes per person per day, over ten, the coming ten years, this household can save hundred and fifty-five thousand gallons. This is for each house. Over ten years, we will have two thousand toilets. So, over ten years, we're estimating a saving of three hundred and ten millions of gallons of water. What about showerheads? For showerheads, the old ones use four to six gallons per minute, which means an average of five gallons per minute. But our new ones uses one point eight gallon per minute, which is a saving big difference in savings, three point eight. Um, so, the three point two gallons that we're gonna save in the same household of three people, and let's say an eight-minute shower per day, over ten years, that's a saving of two hundred thousand gallons of water. There are just one showerhead. We have two thousand of them. That's an estimate of saving five hundred and sixty million gallons of water. Adding the numbers, that's eight hundred and seventy million gallons over the period of ten years. That's a lot of water. But saving water equal saving money. This is a fee schedule for our water, the water company in our city. And you can see here, we have tier one, tier two, and tier three. Let's go with the cheapest one, tier one. So, if our residents use between one to sixteen CCF, each CCF equal about seven hundred and forty-eight gallons, the cost for each one of them is dollar and forty-six cents. All right, let's do our calculation. If we're estimating a saving over the coming ten years of eight hundred and seventy million gallons, divide this by seven forty-eight gallons multiplied by a dollar and forty-six cents, that's a saving of one point seven million dollar over the ten years. But wait a minute. I contacted the water company to find out that ten years ago, the price was zero point three four cents per CCF. That means that over the past ten years, the price went up four point three times. Doing a simple calculation, if that rate of increase gonna happen in the coming ten years, the saving gonna be seven point three million dollars. That's an estimate with, according to our estimation. So, how we're gonna proceed with this project? If you approve this item tonight, we're gonna partnership with Home Depot and EcoTech Services. Um, so, let's say, uh, residents are gonna apply through this program. And once we have fifty or a hundred applications, we're gonna do the purchase through Home Depot, that's gonna deliver them to EcoTech, who gonna do the scheduling, evaluation, and installation. What funds we're gonna use and how much? Eight hundred thousand dollar. So, as I said, we're estimating a saving of about over seven million dollar, which means that this project gonna pay itself in just one year. And we would like to use the American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we propose to use the ARPA fund tonight, um, because this project fits perfectly in the mandate of the ARPA. Uh, it's investing in water and sewer infrastructure, conserving water, and it's for the benefit of our community. And as we know, that the city got about twenty-two million dollar from ARPA, which is, um, half for the city side and half was for the community set aside. And we would like to use the eight hundred thousand dollar from the community set aside. But in order for this program to be successful, a key factor is to promote and advertise on all social media platforms, from the city website to Ballin Park Now, uh, to YouTube, um, Instagram, Facebook, and all other platforms. Two, to do a press release, to send the words out. Also, to posting a sign inside Home Depot store. We actually agreed with Home Depot that if this gets approved, that we're gonna put a display inside Home Depot with the real toilet with a big sign, uh, and arrow saying that you can get this for free and this is how to apply. Finally, an explainer video. We would like to do a video in English and Hispanic and Spanish to our residents that can explain to them how to apply, uh, and what is the program gonna, how is it gonna benefit them. And actually, I have a treat for you tonight. Uh, I have, uh, a work in progress video that I would like to present to you. Um, hopefully the argument will work.
Do apologize for the video. It's actually a really cool video. Um, uh, but, uh, there are some technical difficulties today, but I will, um, email it to all of the council so that they can see it at any time.
Can play on the speaker here. Let's try it.
I'm Matthew, and I am a proud homeowner in the city of Baldwin Park. I want to talk to you about an exciting
You missed. Sam, while, uh, Sam. While Romani sets it up, the, the video, is it done with AI?
So, this is not a real person.
That's what I figured. It was the AI program, right?
So, this is, uh, right. So, um, yeah, we, we wanted somebody that would reflect the community. We added the scrubs on him to, you know, to have a Kaiser kind of vibe. Um, it's, it's a really cool video. Um, uh, a little disappointed that we can't hear enough, but try to run it.
Hi, I'm Matthew, and I am a proud homeowner in the city of Baldwin Park. I want to talk to you about an exciting new program coming to homeowners. It's called the High Efficiency Toilet and Showerhead Replacement Program. Water is the most important resource on the planet. We use water for drinking, cooking, watering our gardens, taking showers, flushing our toilets, and many other uses. In fact, we use so much water that the average household uses over three hundred gallons of water per day. But here's the good news. There are simple ways we can conserve water and save money on our utility bills. One of the most effective ways is by replacing old inefficient fixtures with new water-saving ones. But wait, there's more good news. The city of Baldwin Park is happy to announce that in partnership with the Home Depot and EcoTech, the city will launch the Toilet and Showerhead Replacement Program. Starting in January two thousand twenty-three, any Baldwin Park homeowner who wants to replace their old toilet and showerhead with new water-saving fixtures can do so at no cost. Yes, that's right. The city will cover the entire costs for replacing the fixtures and all you have to do is apply. Here's how it works. To apply, simply go to www.baldwinpark.com-publicworks/savewater and apply. Alternatively, you can contact the city of Baldwin Park Department of Public Works at six two six nine six zero three nine nine three. Once your application is submitted, we will send a friendly contractor to verify your information and ensure that your fixtures qualify for replacement. It really is that easy. And the best part, you can save money on your water bills while also helping to conserve one of our planet's most precious resources. That's a lot of savings. To find out more about water conservation and the Toilet and Showerhead Replacement Program, contact the city of Baldwin Park or visit our website. Together, we can make a difference and preserve this valuable resource for future generations. Thank you. Hope you take advantage of this great program. Please stay tuned for more information coming in January. And remember to continue to keep Baldwin Park beautiful. Hope you enjoy your holidays and have a great day.
Might have, might have been him. He didn't shave, huh? That's very nice.
Yeah, so, um, much better on your phone and on your computer. Uh, I'll send the link for that, uh, a little later. Um, so, just to cap, just to recap, um, so, thi- this type of program, uh, hits, it checks all of the boxes for what ARPA was designed to do. It addresses, um, uh, infrastructure and water and sewer. Um, it has, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, community benefits, like saving, um, the community, uh, money. And so, we are, um, at the final stages of wrapping it all up. And we wanted to bring it to the council at this time to, um, you know, have, have you consider the item. And if you would like to move forward with it tonight, all, all you're really doing is appropriating an eight hundred thousand dollar cap, which was previously allocated, uh, during the year. And so, if approved, it'll authorize the CEO, the attorney, and staff to, uh, finalize the agreements and then we can move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Got a second round of applause. And so, is this, is this one of, uh, Romani's first projects as our?
So, so, yeah, this is actually Romani's, uh, second presentation, and he keeps knocking it out of the park.
Thank you, Romani.
Good job, Romani.
Can only imagine he's gonna bring lasers and fog machines next time.
And that's a third round of applause. Wow.
Wow.
Not going for the fourth? No, all right. Um, so, I think that, um, I know, um, so, I know that we allocated eight hundred thousand dollars. So, can you just kind of explain how is it going to work? Are we not, we're not buying everything at once? It's a, uh, kind of as, as, as orders come in and of course.
So, so, it, it all depends on demand and participation and of course, qualification. So, any interested homeowner, as Romani mentioned, um, goes to Home Depot here in Ballin Park. There will be a display there with a sign that says, "If you're a Ballin Park homeowner, find out how to get me for free." And so, if anyone's looking to replace a new toilet, why not, uh, use a high efficiency, uh, toilet to do so? We're estimating that the eight hundred dollars, eight hundred thousand, depending on, again, on demand and participation, uh, will get us around fifteen hundred to two thousand toilets. And as, uh, Romani so eloquently pointed out in the map, uh, this program will pay itself back within a year or a year and a half.
And that's with installation?
That includes installation, yes.
I just wanted to point that out that the, it's pretty neat because ARPA lets you do water infrastructure improvements on private property, which is why we're able to pay for the installation.
That is correct. So, so, like I said before, it does hit all of the checkboxes for what ARPA was mandated to do.
Yeah, and I think that's pretty neat, right? Because we're not just giving the homeowner a toilet and then expecting them to find the time or the resources to put it in or try to put it themselves. You know, we take care of all that. They're just gonna have to, uh, call waste management for the bulky item pickups.
So.
That is correct.
Quick question.
We'll, we'll schedule the, we'll schedule the bulky item pickup for them as part of the program.
So, if you're not a homeowner and you rent the property and you're stuck with the water bill, you're, don't qualify for that?
At launch, um, not, not, not at launch, but there, there is plans to, um, depending on demand and participation, to grow the, the, uh, program out in order so that we can, um, address situations where renters are renting a home and then, um, apartment owners who, you know, have residence and renters, they could also take advantage of it. So, it, it's, it's, at launch is, is for homeowners, um, but it is intended, uh, to grow onto other, um, residents and, uh, people in the community.
I'm sorry, I didn't even ask permission. I just.
It's okay.
I, I have another question. Unless, are you done or not yet?
I'm just commenting on everything, huh?
Okay.
I just want to, so, it's, it's really up to the council how they want to do it, but I, I agree that there is a, there's also a need for renters. I know, um, you know, when we were dealing with the apartment complex on Vinland, they were talking about how the, the property owner was taking all the water bills, putting them together and then making everybody pay an even amount, whether they had the same amount of people as somebody else or not.
That's another subject on another agenda, on the property owners and what they're doing. So.
Of course, yes. So, go ahead.
So, so, in the past, and I think it's a great idea to replace the, the toilets and the showerheads because we do need to save water. But in the past, the water, our, our water company here has helped with this process. So, why don't we have conversations with them to see how they can help? Because it is for everybody. And it, it's trying to save water. It's trying to help our residents and they work with our residents. So, why don't we have a conversation with our water company to see how much money they can help with and to make it a group effort, the city working together with the water company?
So, um, as I understand it, two, two reasons. Um, I think the intent of this program was to partner with the water company. And so, they opted out.
When was that?
Um, this was maybe in February.
Well, maybe we need to revisit with them because it is to benefit our water company as well.
Also. I can speak to that, uh, Sam, if I may, because, uh, I know when the mayor first brought up the idea of doing such a program, uh, our first partner to go to was the Water District.
Which makes sense.
And, uh, i- i- it was going well. And, you know, the Water District at the time was in the midst of, uh, finalizing their relocation to, to their beautiful new headquarters. By the way, Director Vargas, thank you for the tour this morning. Some of us were, were at, at the facility for the tour. And so, i- the timing just didn't align with what they were prepared to absorb because it was going to be done through them. Uh, we were going to be the, um, a marketing partner as well as a, um, a funding partner. And, um, and they were, uh, pretty much engaged and willing to participate. But then, like I said, it, it had to do with their, their priority, foc- being focused on ensuring that they were able to relocate and, uh, so, so, the, the timing didn't align itself. However, uh, in our visit this morning, um, I, I brought it up, uh, to the general manager, Jose, in that they have access to our rebate program. And we want to tap into the rebate program. So, they're very willing to partner in that regard.
And what is the rebate?
So, rebate is something that comes from the Upper San Gabriel Valley Water District and the Metropolitan Water District. And I want to say it's either forty or fifty dollars per unit. So, uh, while right now, we're proposing to fund it entirely on, on our own dime, uh, if we take advantage of this rebate. And this is just in conceptual conversations. So, we have to work out all the, because do, would, would that require them to have a approval in the process? You know, that's something we would have to insert as we develop the procedures that Sam and Romani were saying. But we definitely want to pursue the rebate. I, I think the council will be in support of that.
Yeah.
So, that would be in partnership with them.
I, I would like to add that, you know, Valley County is not the only water company that serves the city. There's three others. So, there's a total of four water companies. So, um.
Can we reach out to the other water companies or just this one?
They were, they were all, uh, they're all interested. And I think the rebate program makes sense because it, it is an Upper San Gabriel Valley, um, you know, regional program. So, it will, um, apply to the other water companies as well.
Okay, so, when, if the rebate program was to go in place, let's say we were to fund it upfront. And then we do the rebate program. How would that work for us? It would be.
We would get the reimbursement of the money. The, the owner won't have to get involved. They, I mean, the property owner would have to sign off on the fact that it was installed and that they were the beneficiary of, of the product, but the reimbursement would come to us.
Upper San Gabriel would reimburse us directly.
Yeah. And I think through the, w- we have to work it out with, with the County Valley Water, whether it, it goes through them or if it comes directly to us. I think.
Either way, whether it goes through them or them, we would still get it.
Yes.
So, how much is it? I probably missed it. Per household, how much does it cost?
Romani, do you have that information up?
And they would reimburse fifty percent, you're saying?
For, for the toilet, the unit itself. No, forty or fifty dollars. I can't recall.
Forty to fifty dollars out of five hundred, that is cost per household?
The unit itself is a hundred and ten dollars. And that's the toilet. The installation is the costly thing.
That's a cost for installing one toilet and one showerhead, the purchase and the installation.
Wow, labor's expensive.
Yeah, labor is expensive. Yeah, labor is expensive. Oh, yes.
Dispatch fee, there's a dispatch fee and evaluation fee and, uh, the installation itself, it costs some money. It gets cheaper if we install more than one toilet per house. So it gets cheaper as much, uh, if we add more toilets per each house, home, it gets cheaper price.
So it's so much not the toilet and the showerhead that's costing a lot, it's the labor that's costing so much.
Right, so when, when we went to, um, RFP, we went, uh, to RFP to do the entire thing. When we got the RFPs, when they came back, um, it turns out that, um, Home Depot would provide the best price for the toilets and the showerheads, but not the best price in installation.
You know, they charge an arm and a leg.
And, and so Ecotec, on the other hand, uh, gave us the best installation price, but not the best, uh, fixture price.
Do you look at it at other organizations for, or companies for labor?
So, uh, there are, Ecotec, as I understand it, is one of the premier, uh, I, I wouldn't say premier, but it, experienced firms that do these type of, of projects. In fact, they, they've done, uh, several in the region. They, they did Baldwin Park before and they've done, uh, West Covina.
And so in the past, when the water company has partnered with the city, have they done the installation as well? Or just provided the toilets and showerheads?
No, yeah, they, they've, they've done the installation as well.
Yeah, it's, it's better to do it all inclusive. I mean, the, while it may sound simple to drop a toilet, it can get complicated.
It's pretty simple.
Well, I, I don't know.
But yeah, in, in some of these homes, there, there are constraints, you know, some are small, uh, you know, the area, you know, who knows? We're, we're hoping, um, we're hoping that a lot of homeowners take advantage of the program and so that they can address a lot of these issues.
I do have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes.
So are we estimating anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand? Or are we gonna be installing two thousand?
Um, we are estimating.
Yeah, it's an estimate and it's all based on demand and participation. We might not even have two thousand interested homeowners.
Okay, so let's just say, let's just say we do have two thousand interested homeowners. This includes a toilet and a showerhead, correct?
Yes.
Potentially, yes. Uh, that depends on the homeowner if they, uh, want to do both, but they can do one.
Okay, so we have the question of households that have one, more than one bathroom, right? So they would have two showerheads, two toilets. Households that have an ADU, that would also be an additional toilet. Um, so if we're estimating two thousand toilets at eight hundred thousand dollars, we're looking at a cost of approximately four hundred dollars per set of toilet and how, and a, and showerhead. If we get the reimbursement or the rebate from the, from the water company, we're looking at about fifty dollars per unit at two thousand, that's a hundred thousand dollars. So we would be getting a rebate of about a hundred thousand dollars. We would be forking out eight hundred thousand, so it would cost us seven hundred thousand dollars. Enrique, question for you. This is gonna be coming according to the presentation, eight hundred thousand dollars from the community set aside of the ARPA funds. Earlier, when we had a discussion about the total amount that we had in there, uh, when we were, uh, discussing in closed session, without going into any details, do these eight hundred thousand dollars include that amount that you mentioned that we had in total?
No.
Set aside?
This, this is outside and separate from the, the figure that I provided to you in closed session.
Okay, so this is not touching that amount?
It's not.
Okay. Um. And for, what are the qualifications? Do you just have to be a homeowner in Baldwin Park? Is there any type of criteria?
Yes, we're, we're, we're looking for, uh, homeowners at launch. Uh, but the, the main criteria is that you're a homeowner and in the future, uh, a resident, but it has to be within the jurisdiction of the city of Baldwin Park.
Okay, and then to grow, uh, to grow this, uh, you, you mentioned that to grow this and add additional, obviously it's gonna add additional funding if we grow it into now, let's just say apartments or renters. That's obviously a whole different amount that we would be looking at in the future. Um, you did mention that the, this amount was previously allocated during the year. I don't recall that we previously allocated this amount during the year. When did we allocate this?
So, um, I, I, off the top of my head, I don't recall, but it was somewhere, I wouldn't say in August. Uh, it was a, um, uh, study session where the city, uh, proposed several projects. Uh, this one among them, uh, as a set aside, as an a- allocated set aside, but it was not appropriated in the budget. And that, that's what tonight is intended to do, to appropriate the eight hundred thousand, uh, to the project.
Um, okay.
And then, so based on the discussion report, it was on, um, January nineteenth where we first asked for direction and discussion.
Would it be possible, I mean, I don't know, I mean, eh, don't, don't get me wrong, this is a great, it's a great program. I just think that we should have more of a collaborative, uh, effort with our, our water companies. Uh, Sam mentioned there's four in the city. Um, and see how, I know that in the past, the Valley County Water District would, I have a program that you would bring your toilet and then you would swap it and they would give you a new toilet. Um, I know that they were busy with the, with their new headquarters, but now that they're gonna be moving in at the beginning of the year and that's no longer their number one priority, would it be a good idea to maybe revisit and figure out how the water companies can assist with this since it's gonna benefit them the most? I mean, obviously it's gonna benefit all, benefit is alright, we wanna save water. But I mean, this does, you know, fall under the jurisdiction of the water company. So I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on this.
Well, that was the reason why I think I, I brought it up to, to, um, the, the Valley County Water General Manager, Jose, and because their, their timing is different, but, but not to restart the process all over. It's been a year, uh, on our side to bring it to this point. I, I think you can direct us to see how we can strike a, a partnership outside of the rebate. I mean, uh, Jose already expressed an interest on the rebate and I think that much we can definitely do. But in terms of being able to do more, initially the concept was for them to lead the project and we would just be a sort of, you know, in, in the background. And I don't know that they would be willing to do that at this point anymore, but, eh, you know, we can definitely entertain doing more than just the rebate. Maybe, I mean, I, I know that Jose and company and the Water District will be more than willing to help us, um, navigate since they have a lot of expertise in this area. So I'm pretty sure that that much they will do.
Enrique, um, I agree with ma- uh, with Councilmember Damien. Um, I would like us to, well, can we hold on the item and, and just have the conversation with them again? And see if they'll contribute, you know, to this? Because I know in the past, they did provide the, um, toilet and then also the showerhead. And I'm disappointed to learn that, you know, they declined. Um, but I do understand that at the time, the priority was their capital improvement and infrastructure and things like that. Um, but can we revisit that? Because I know that they're asking our residents to cut back on their water use and it would just seem appropriate that they would partner with us on this program rather than, you know, kind of deferring to the city to lead this program and, and, um, I know that a lot of work has gone into this, so I, I'm, I think it's a great program and I think it's necessary for where we are and, you know, the drought. So I'm not saying that, you know, we're, we're not gonna support, but I just think can we revisit with the Valley County Water District at minimum? And, you know, they're a large organization and provided this program in the past. So would they be willing to at least participate with some funding, even if they can administer the program? And it sounds like, you know, every, all the components are here already. They're already packaged nicely with the partnership with Ecotec, I believe, and Home Depot and, and the city and just getting Valley County Water District to contribute. And again, it's because they, they're also asking our residents to cut back on water use. Um, and I think we're all trying to do our part.
Enrique, um, I, I want to, um, I kinda concur with my council colleagues on that. I would like to maybe, as, um, Mayor Protem Garcia said, to kind of revisit in the sense that, I think that we're all in agreeance that it's great and we wanna do it. But I think that, uh, maybe for myself, and I think what I'm hearing them say is that we wanna have a little bit more of a collaborative effort with them. And I, and I have confidence in the Valley County Water District and their board that they'd be on board, like you, like you, uh, explained, to, um, kind of be with us on that. So I think that, um, as Mayor Protem Garcia said, maybe revisit it, uh, have a conversation with them. Um, because I think that it's a great project and, you know, our community would benefit from it a lot. So, um, I'm kind of in line with what they're, they're thinking. Thank you.
Mayor, may I? Hi, uh, good evening. So I wanted to just chime in a little bit on that. Um, it is a great program. I really do agree with the, with everybody else and all of our colleagues. Um, but as we know, Baldwin Park has a large, a very large community of renters. And if we can get more collaboration for this program, we can probably open it up for renters to, you know, utilize the program as well a lot sooner than later.
Absolutely, that, that is the plan.
Great. Yeah, and I agree. I mean, we have a, uh, we have at least forty-five percent renter rate here in the city of Baldwin Park. So almost one in two units is a, is a renter, you know, and we wanna make sure we help everybody. So, yeah, so, you know, I know that we did, we did reach out. If the council would like to reach out again to the water companies, I think that's fine. And then we can bring this item back for further discussion after you get an answer.
Yeah, if you, eh, if you, um, continue this until the meeting of the, the eighteenth, uh, let's see, uh, the eighteenth of January, then by then we will have check with the Water District.
All right. Yeah, yeah, let's try to do that, Enrique, cause this is a great project. But let's just try to see if we can get some collaboration with the, with the water companies. And then maybe see if maybe we can add or include in this phase, um, some of our renters. Maybe do half and half. I mean, eh, I think our homeowners have better means to purchase a toilet than maybe some of our renters do. So maybe kind of, you know, see what we can do to include some of the renters into this phase.
Very good.
Yeah, very good. So, mm, I'll make a motion to continue this item to the, uh, January eighteenth meeting. With, um, you know, to give time for staff to, uh, connect with our, uh, water company. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Avila? Councilmember Jean M. Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, so we are at item number nineteen. We have the approval of employment agreement with Anna Karina Rueda for the position of Human Resources Risk Manager. Um, Enrique, anything to know?
Yeah, very briefly, uh, Karina comes to us from the city of Rosemead. She's already a HR manager, eh, slash director at, at the city of Rosemead. Prior to that, she had been with the city of Vernon, uh, quite a bit of experience in HR, over twenty years of it. And, um, the proposed salary, eh, this is something that I need to read out, uh, per our city attorney. We're proposing to start her at step three, not proposing, she's agreed to start at step three, um, which is ten thousand ninety-eight fifty-one cents a month. Ten thousand ninety-eight fifty-one cents a month. Um, that would be step three out of a seven step pay scale. And she is, uh, going to start, if council approves, she would start on the twenty-seventh, which is the day after the holiday next week. The, this is only base salary? Right.
Evaluation, the first five months of employment or six months of employment, you wait a whole year before you do an evaluation?
We, we, it, it must stipulate it once a year, but, eh, you know, I can do a monthly, I can do every two months, I can do.
I, I would like to see, especially when it's a new employment, um, see an evaluation five months, six months into their employment to see where they're at and if they are meeting what we are requiring here in our city.
Yeah, I think, uh, there, there's nothing that would prevent me from doing that, you know, um. The car allowance? Uh, let's see, is, is everybody getting a car allowance? I wanna say yes. I'm sorry, I don't know offhand. Uh, I will say, we, we had a, a good pool of interest, uh, in this case, but she definitely rose to the top, uh, and would be, would definitely be a, a good fit for us. I mean, you know, we, we've been managing as best we can with, with the assistance of a consultant. That contract ends, uh, next week as well.
What is the reason for transportation allowance? I mean, when we apply for a job, we assume we're gonna pay gas or the bus or what have you to get to work.
I, I, I wanna say that.
Especially for HR, I mean, usually they're in the office and I know they may go to trainings, but when they go to trainings, we usually give an allowance for that if they're driving. Why is, I, this is the first time I noticed this five hundred dollar per month transportation allowance.
I wanna say it's part of the benefit matrix that the executive team sees. So it's not anything unusual or, or unique to her.
Enrique, um, usually on this position, there would have been a process that would have come to the council at some point in closed session. And so I'm just wondering what happened to that process? And should we spend a little more time on this item, uh, in closed session?
Well, let's see, um, we, um, this being s- one of those classifications in which the account, eh, there, it's a manager position as opposed to a department head position. And in the, uh, discussion we had had in closed session, Councilmember Garcia, where I was keeping the council informed of the process and how it was going, eh, it, it was, it was discussed that I would be presenting a, um, a proposed contract to the city council, which is what I'm doing now. And, but I had been keeping the council informed of every step of the selection process.
Is this the position that Laura?
Yes, HR manager, risk manager.
Yeah, yeah, normally we, we would have, um, actually, you know, done, been in, more involved in the process. Um, but I, yes, I, I know you have, thank you. Um, but I just wonder if the council wants to bring this back?
I would like to bring it back and just look closely more at, uh, what is being offered and the evaluation process.
Yeah, um.
Just to look at it and discuss it in more detail.
Hasn't this been already accepted, Enrique, by the?
Yeah, and she served, she has served notice to her other employer. I mean, literally tomorrow's her last day over there. Uh, and, and I just wanna tell you, it has not been easy, as you know, to be able to bring people on board. So it was, uh, you know, we had the first round of recruitment, we had hardly any interested applicants. Um, we, we have a staff of two people right now in HR. It's a state of, if not a state of emergency, it certainly is a state of urgency. And it's, it's, it's day to day in terms of being able to maintain things to float. It's absolutely essential that we bring her on board. I, I mean. scold me for if you feel that I bring matters to the city council, but I say we got to bring her on board.
So, so these are a couple of, so, let me ask you, so the five hundred dollar car allowance, that's included within the ten thousand ninety-eight a month? Or is that separate?
No, it's outside of it. It's a non-perceivable benefit. The ten thousand is the base salary. Now, that's the other thing, and I don't know if I'm encroaching on closed session items, but, you know, she accepted a step three, which-
Yeah.
It was amazing. I mean, look, we negotiated, anyway, she's coming in at step three, let me just tell you that.
And I just, Councilmember Damian, so apparently, this is on the executive and unclassified managers' benefit matrix that was actually effective July one, twenty twenty-one. So, something that has been approved prior.
Yeah, it's part of their benefits package and, so maybe Enrique for future, so that we don't have kind of these detailed discussions about this in open session. Maybe, maybe we can bring it into a closed session to get kind of approval to, you know, once, because I know that you mentioned these positions here are basically something that you guys, you would hire yourself, right? Obviously based on experience and qualifications. But maybe when we start to offer or you're going to make the offer, maybe bring it to us in closed session. So this way, if we do have detailed questions or concerns, we can discuss them in closed session more freely. Because we don't want to obviously encroach on something that, you know, it's a personnel matter. So I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but, you know, as you guys know, there's a lot of positions that need to be filled. The HR position is something that's very critical to us, especially now coming into the new year. It's step three, the position's already been offered, she's already accepted. I would, you know, I would make a motion to approve.
I'd second your motion.
Yeah, I was going to second. I would just suggest that in the future, you know, any executive team or this position definitely come to the council per the, you know, the usual process to avoid this conversation in the regular session. But, yeah, I get it Enrique, I see that, you know, it's a manager position and so I can understand why the process proceeded the way that it did. But I agree that, you know, we really shouldn't be talking about these details until, you know, we do it in closed session and then bring it forward in the regular. So I think that we have the support to move it forward. So Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. And then I do just want to mention that, I think last time we had a discussion about hiring contracted employees and letting staff take care of that. So I think that's might be where Enrique felt that this was in a discussion for council to take on who we were hiring. I think that's something that we also have to further discuss. So City Clerk, go ahead and give us-
And just real quick, before we take roll, and I agree, I remember we told Enrique, because he knew what we needed and what to look for, to go ahead and pick. And I know you've made the right choice. And I should have paid attention to that, affected July one and maybe not. But I believe that you made the right choice and you selected the person that was most qualified for this job. And it is not an easy job. So starting at a step three, it is, it is good for us. It's a difficult job to come into, there's going to be a lot of updating that this person's going to have to do to be able to know where we're at with our HR department. So thank you for all the work you did Enrique.
Great, so City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Damian.
Yes.
Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you for that. And then we do have the approval of employment agreement with Fabiola Celaya Melic for the position of city planner. Is there any other, any comments or any notes to take, Sam or your manager?
I want to read out the proposed, the recommended, well, this is also, it's an agreement that's been presented to the applicant or to the nominee has been accepted. So forgive me for that, but it's coming in at step five, step seven. Now, this is a different pay scale and it's nine thousand seven hundred and one and thirty-seven cents per month at step five. And this person is also ready to start on the same date, twenty-seven next week, Tuesday of next week.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the employment agreement. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila. Councilmember Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you for that. So we move to city council acting as a successor agency for the dissolved community development commission. So we have three items, I believe, they normally, I believe they normally come in as a consent calendar, is that correct? Well, I'll make a motion, I don't see it as a consent, is it? That's fine. So I'll make a motion to pass items SA one, SA two, SA three. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala. Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you for that. And we do have two more, more agendas. The housing authority, we do have a consent calendar, so I'll make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? Anybody?
I second.
Thank you. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
I'm sorry, what item?
The housing authority, consent calendar.
Ah, yes, yes.
Councilmember Damian.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila. Motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you for that. And now I'll make a motion to pass the finance authority consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Estrada.
Yes.
Councilmember Damian.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Avila.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you for that, City Clerk. And now we go down to, city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff request and communications. So I did ask staff to put this on the agenda. I know that you've been paying attention to the news, you know, the animal shelter in Ballen Park has kind of come under a little bit of scrutiny for accidentally euthanizing a three-month-old dog named Bowie. I had actually been in communication with the animals, with Supervisor Solis's office prior to that, as I wanted to make sure that we worked hard to better the conditions for the animals there. Although we don't run that shelter, it is in the city of Ballen Park and it does reflect on us and what we allow. So this kind of came coincidentally at a right time, so I would ask my colleagues to join me in writing a letter of support for better, better conditions and better treatment, better customer service at the animal shelter for our residents and of course the forward-legged furry friends that are staying there. And supporting Supervisor Hilda Solis's motion to reduce euthanization. We also know, so after all this happened, I did meet with our supervisor's office and I also met with the executive director and a big portion of the administrative staff for the Los Angeles County Animal Care. I did ask, we did talk about the incidents and they did mention that they are doing an internal investigation. They did mention that this shelter is pretty old and so it was designed to be a dog pound, not an animal care shelter, animal care shelter. So that's one of the issues in providing better care and continuum of care for these animals. So I did want to request a support for a letter of support for funding from the state for one-time use to help fund a new shelter for the county. Is there any questions or comments from the council?
No, actually I fully support this. It is time that we upgrade our current shelter. Also, I want to make sure that when they are addressing their internal investigation, that they are also addressing the staff that works there. You know, numerous complaints from different people that have attended the shelter, the rudeness that they are received by, the way they treat the animals there, it's inhumane. So we need to really hold these people accountable. This is not the first that I hear complaints from that animal shelter. Although it is ran by the county, we are funding it. We just paid, how much money did we just allocate? I don't recall, not too long ago, for the county.
So around five hundred thousand, Mayor Protem Damian.
Yeah, so, you know, a little bit over half a million dollars that we're allocating for that, even though it's ran by the county, we need to hold them accountable and let them know that they need to either properly train their staff or hire staff who are able to handle these animals at the animal shelter. Thank you, Mayor. I fully support it.
Yes, and I also support it.
Yes, Mayor, and I appreciate the fact that you moved on it so quickly. I know as soon as you, you received the information, you were on the phone with, with Hilda Solis and trying to figure out what is it that we can do as a city, because we are not happy with the situation. As Councilmember Damian said, there has been numerous complaints and the people are, not everybody, I will say not everybody, there are some people that need training, more customer service training. And thank you for taking the lead and immediately calling and taking action on it. I totally agree with it.
Mayor, while we're on the subject, we should also mention, you know, we do contract with the county for animal services. And sometimes when you call into the number, you can be waiting for a substantial amount of time before somebody answers. And I would imagine that some people get discouraged and probably, you know, just choose not to even report whatever injured animal or, you know, dead animal pickup or whatever it might be. So we might as well throw that in as well, because that's a substantial amount that the city contributes for these services.
Yes, and you just reminded me of something, Mayor Protem Garcia. Two days ago, a hawk ran into my front window and it got injured. We didn't know it was injured. My mom saw it run into the window and then kind of flew off. Well, a few minutes later, my daughter saw it at our front door. She thought somebody had delivered a package, so she was going to the door, but it's a glass door, you could see right through it, and she saw it was, it was a hawk. And she didn't know who to call, she was trying to call different numbers. So the first thing I did is I called Enrique, which was faster for a city employee to contact them. But it should be the same type of service for anybody trying to call. I don't know what happened to the hawk. Do you have an update on him? He was a beautiful bird and I had him in my front porch, but, but the point here, Mayor Protem Garcia, is that yes, our residents need a number where they get an answer and that they get the service that they need, because you're in a panic, you don't know how to take care of animals, a hawk or a coyote that may be injured.
And in fact, because of that incident and the communications that the mayor had had with the animal service and with Supervisor Solis, I did make it a point to establish a closer relationship with the local shelters. So Maria Rosales is the shelter manager and Bradley Kim is, I think, at the executive level. So we're going to set up a dual staff tour of the shelter for sometime in late January, early February. So that all of our departments, especially Public Works and Police already works with animal shelter. But for questions like yours, right?
Yes.
Where we got to get an immediate response.
And I appreciate Public Works, they immediately came out, but they're not trained to deal with these type of situations for the bird safety and for our staff safety. So we need to make sure that somebody that's trained is always available to come out twenty-four hours a day, so.
And they were very responsive. I think they're definitely on high alert with regards to responding to city leadership.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to mention that. I mean, they did respond fairly fast and we set up that meeting fairly fast. And they did offer a tour, so I'm glad you guys are also taking care of that. And, you know, if council's also willing to join, we want to be there too, so we can see what-
Absolutely.
So and I did ask, you know, I did let them know that, you know, we expect better, but we're also here to partner with them and figure out, you know, how we can make this a better shelter, better services for our community, because it is in Ballen Park. And also extend that relationship. I know that they also have resources that they can offer, so they do have mobile clinics. I think they're on their way to get a second, a second unit, so we can set something up at Morgan Park for some of our already pet owners. I believe they also have vouchers for medical needs for pets, which is very important for our community to know, because they do get, those get expensive, especially for medical care. So, yes, so just to reiterate a letter of support for better treatment and services at the animal shelter, not just to our supervisor, but to the whole board, as they all have a role to play in there. And a letter to our state representatives in request for a one-time funding for the animal shelters, potentially either an upgrade or a new shelter. Great, and so that ends my discussion. I don't know if council members have any last minute questions, comments, concerns?
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a few comments I want to say. First of all, I just want to wish our community and all staff happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And I want to thank Mayor Protem Garcia for closing on behalf of Mrs. Blanca Cabrera. I was looking to do that as well, so thank you, Mayor Protem, for doing that. And I also would like to close on behalf of my ninety-seven-year-old uncle Salvador Ayala, who passed earlier this month. A World War II veteran at the age of ninety-seven, my patriot of our family, vested in his community. We go back a hundred years in the city of Colton, California. So it's a big loss for my family personally, for me personally and for their community. So I'd like to close on behalf of my Uncle Salvador Ayala as well. And I just want to give a big shout-out as I always try to, to staff. I want to thank Recreation Community Service, I want to thank Public Works, I want to thank all of our departments for really rallying around our community during the holiday season, all of the great events. I really appreciated the holiday parade, so I'm glad that Councilmember Damian and along with my council colleagues moved it to December. I thought it was very festive for the community and they really enjoyed it. So I want to thank everybody for that. And lastly, I just want to comment regarding, I heard one of our community members, and I think this has been the theme, about communication and speaking and having open lines of communication. So I think it's very important that we continue to, especially from my position, to have open communication. And I know that our CEO Enrique and I have have open communication and I've kept him in the loop of everything that I'm sending out. So I just want to comment regarding two incidences that we've had within the last five days of school, where I had open communication, I felt, with our police department chief. And it's very important that my experience, even with yourself, prior when I sat on this council, was to have open line of communication. And when incidence is happening in our community, that we are addressing that. And it's disheartening for me when I get information from grandma who's at school asking me questions and I immediately look at my phone, possibly thinking that I have an update and I don't. So I don't want to waste anyone's time. I know that the department is doing their job. But when I ask a question or inquiry regarding something, I'd appreciate an immediate, as soon as you can answer. Because I'm held responsible to the residents of this community and they're looking at us for direction. So we had two schools on lockdown, as you're aware. We've had open communication about it through texting, along with our CEO. And I think it's imperative that when, I'll speak for myself, when I send a text and I'm inquiring about the status or what is the situation, not to divulge to the community, but that I'm aware that what is going on, because I need to be knowledgeable in the situation. So then I can there, you know, answer to the residents who elected us. So it's really important. I'd appreciate that open line of communication. We've had it before and I'd appreciate it again. Okay? Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I would also, council member, I would, I'm the council member now.
Council member, sorry, sorry.
Yes. So I just want to wish our community, our residents- So I just want to wish our community, our residents, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. Feliz Navidad y feliz prospero año nuevo para todos los residentes. I also want to thank all of our staff. It was a really busy month, but there was a lot of events and they were all a huge success. Our, you know, parks and recreation, our public works, our police department. We had the Posada at the park on Friday, huge success in collaboration with St. John the Baptist Catholic Church. We had the luncheon at Esperanza Villa on Monday, we had the Serenity Homes Christmas dinner last night. Just so many to name, but I just want to say, thank you guys very much, because your work does not go unnoticed. And we can only make these events success because of your work and your dedication. So thank you all very much and have a Merry Christmas.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Avila.
First of all, my condolences to the Lozano and Ayala family. Difficult times, especially during the season, it just some, somehow seems more difficult. But I also want to acknowledge all of our staff and all of our departments. Because not only through the Christmas season have you done an amazing job, you have done an amazing job throughout the years that you have been here. And I know you're always willing to, to move projects forward as busy as you may be, you do it with a smile. And no matter how much you have on your plate, you're always willing to do more. And I just had the conversation with a, a staff earlier today that, you know, they have too many projects on their plates and maybe sometimes they should tell us, no, wait, can we wait? Because I think it's overwhelming sometimes. I know we want a lot of things done and as council, sometimes we also need to take a step back. But I appreciate that you're always smiling and you always say, yes, of course, we're going to get it done. So I want to wish every single one of our staff members Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, that you all stay safe and healthy. That you cherish your family, your friends, your loved ones. And remember to live every single day, every minute as if it's our last, because we must appreciate each other. And I truly appreciate every single one of you, every single department here. Our police department has been amazing, playing Santa for our children. They just loved it, they were out. I know our Santa started at 6:00 in the morning and travels very far and didn't leave our event till past 7:30 last night and had to be back in on shift. So thank you to our police department. Please thank Santa for me, chief, because it was an amazing job. Thank you for always attending all the events that we have in our city, whether it's you or your staff members or our police officers, they're always there. And in, I also work for the school and, and when it comes to response time, I, I understand the complexity of calling it, of calling us and telling us what's going on. I, I've had incidents in my school and in doubt, I always tell our staff, let's lock down. If we haven't heard from our police department and we feel something's going on, let's lock down. As soon as they have the information for us, they will let us know. Because I have done phone calls before, what's going on, and they're right in the middle of the process. So in order for us to give us information, they need to have the full detail information. They don't want to miss any steps or information. So I understand that it's difficult sometimes and I appreciate the fact that you do keep us informed as soon as you have the, the information available and, and it's very difficult. And we're at a school with children, so we kind of get a little more, call it crazy, because there's so many little bodies we have to take care of. But I appreciate the fact that you do inform us as soon as you have that information available to us. Again, Merry Christmas to everybody, stay safe and hugs for everyone, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I do want to extend my condolences to the Ayala family and from Ballin Park to Colton. And also want to thank our staff for everything that you've done this year to really, you know, make our community shine and to highlight all the, all the good of our community. And you are all so committed and I just want to express my appreciation. Happy holidays to all of you, Merry Christmas, be safe in the new year, be healthy and we'll see you soon, thank you so much.
Great, thank you for that. Want to echo what everybody said. And I just want to point out, I was talking to Manny about the news and we actually double headlines, the local Sangiovese Valley Tribune paper. Knows for La Posada and our incoming 700 and something thousand dollar grant for the mini park on Main. So, you know, but it's all possible because of all of you and so we're very, very grateful. Not just for our admin staff, but also the, the staff that you oversee and the staff that works with you and getting all these things done. You know, I, we always say that, you know, we get to come up here and just kind of say yes and throw some ideas, but it's all, it's all of you and your teams that make it happen. So we're, we're really, really grateful, because not only are, are community enjoying these events like La Posada, I know that there was a lot of events going on for Christmas. Probably the best time to be busy. But at the end of the day, you know, the city also benefits, because we get some positive feedback and we get to shine, you know, in the Sangiovese Valley. So thank you. I really hope all of you have some happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, if you're celebrating Hanukkah, I believe we are in one of the days of it. And I believe we will see each other next year.
That's right.
Night, everybody.
I hope you enjoyed your year with us, Marco.
Oh, yeah.
Your two months, well, I was going to say the end of the year with us. Two months, he's on probation.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn the meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, meeting is adjourned, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Good night, Mark, David, everyone, have a happy holidays.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Good night, happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
No, there wasn't nothing wrong with this. No, yeah, no, that was my mistake, I didn't check that. But it was like, oh, it stood out, but no, in the past, no, there's nothing wrong. And what we're going to offer. Have a Merry Christmas, stay safe and have fun with your family.